All set? Good evening. I'm going to call the Board of Selectmen meeting for December 18th, 2017 back to order. We started tonight's meeting in executive session where we talked about contract negotiations with the SEIU Union. We did take a vote in that executive session and we will announce that later in the agenda. As required by open meeting law, we are informing you that we will be video, audio taping, as well as live broadcasting this public meeting. In addition, anyone in the audience wishing to video or audio tape must notify the chairman now. Hearing no one, please rise and join me for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Anyone for weekly briefing? Public comment and announcement. We're going to take up the consent agenda and number one in the, under A, the December 4th, 2017 executive session minutes are going to be with pulled tonight. We noticed they need some corrections, so they'll be back next week or next meeting, January 8th. I'd also ask that the B be held and taken up separately, Larry.
Mr. Chairman, I move the following consent agenda items. A, approve the minutes for December 11th, 2017 executive session. As you say, we'll hold on B and take that up separately. C, accept the resignation of Dr. Robert Insley as a member of the Board of Health. D, approve request by Chatham-Harwich Newcomers Club for one day spatial license for wine and malt and one day entertainment license for February 9, 2018, a snow date of February 10, 2018. E, approve application for road race by Ragnar Events for event on May 11 and 12, 2018. F, approve request to close Villa Roma from January 9, 2018, to the first week in March for repairs and maintenance.
Okay, it's been, oh, second? Moved and seconded. Consent agenda item A minus one and then, and C, D, E, and F. Any discussion? Don?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. While I am going to vote for the whole consent agenda, item D, I've said this before, I just wanted to take the occasion to say it again, harder to regulate a one-day license than it would be a yearly license because there's a punishment mechanism you can impose on the second. Even if we were planning on doing this in a kind of laid-back way, I'd really love this to have like a public hearing notice and just its own agenda item in the future because it's a responsibility of ours that we're designated as the local licensing board.
Thank you, Don. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, thank you. Larry, we read B?
B, approve the contracted agreement for the construction of the golf course cart barn to J.J. Kaidolsi Incorporated in the total amount of $545,000.
Any second?
Second.
Moved and seconded to approve B. Any discussion? Don?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. You've given me religion. We have talked about this in the past and I wouldn't want to hold up the contract because it's very, it's a necessary thing and I believe it's in the best interest of the town, but I really would rather see some more process involved in the recommendation of the contracts of magnitude.
Thank you.
Much along the lines that the chair has talked about for the last couple of months.
Thank you. Any other discussion?
Only that it is, the timing is critical. They need to start it almost yesterday in hopes of getting the golf course open for the beginning of the season. So, I think there were some, I think the, I think it's a lesson, the contract could, we could maybe tighten that up a bit. We had some programming issues, if you will, that in terms of, you know, clearing more land and the timing of that, that caused the golf committee to go back to both conservation and planning. That, but they put in enough work to get it passed and move it ahead. And so, I think it's a lesson, but I would be for moving ahead at this point.
Mine was just a comment for in the future.
I know, I just, yeah.
Chrissy, did you raise your hand?
Yeah, I just, just to be clear, one of the things that we were delaying is that we needed to get planning board approval, so we got a planning board approval last Tuesday night. So, we wanted to make sure that we had that prior to bringing it to the board. So, we did ask for a waiver of just the building. We do owe them a site plan within 60 days, so we will do that. We were a little overzealous on the clearing and planning, not planning board, Conservation Commission has requested that we take certain actions, which we are agreeable to do to remedy that, so, and I did express my apologies to the planning board for our delayed submission of that. One of the things, just so people should probably be aware, we were hoping it would be a small enough project where we'd be able to do it in-house. And at a $1.2 million project, if you pay a project person to kind of manage it and oversee it, designer, you're probably going to pay 10%. So, it's $120,000. And by doing it in-house, we wanted to try to save that money for the residents. But we were a little bit sloppier than I would have liked and for that, you know, I have expressed my apologies.
Thank you, Chris. Don, you all set?
Yeah, well, just to be clear, it wasn't about not dotting the i's, crossing the t's in the planning board. When I held an unlimited warrant in the federal government, you still, nonetheless, had to get two, three, four review signatures to be able to present it to somebody. And that's what I'm talking about, is like sending it through the route like the finance director that you discussed a couple of months ago.
Right. Thank you. I am working on the policy for contracts. Any other discussion?
No.
All in favor?
Aye.
And I'm going to abstain, Chris. Thank you. Next up tonight's public hearings and presentations, and we have the Outer Cape Health Services presentation. Welcome. I think you're at the front row.
Mr. Chair, I'd been involved with this, with Outer Cape Health, and I pressed them to come in and give us an update. They'll, they'll come back with more formal plans that I was going to talk about, but this is such a visible project as, as a board, we should be kept track and it gives them a chance to inform the public where they're, where they're going as well.
Absolutely. Thank you.
Hello, I'm, as you know, Ed McManus and a member of the Board of Outer Cape Health and actually chair of their building committee, and I'm just here to introduce myself and our team, who is primarily responsible for moving this project ahead. And I'd like to introduce Peggy Penny Kyle, who is also from Harwich and also a member of the Board, who has been with the Board now three years, three years, so.
Welcome.
But I think we would not be ready to, in our position, to start leaping forward if it was not for the strong hand of our CEO, Pat Nadel.
Strong hand, yes. Pushing it along.
My husband would probably say something else, but that's okay. Good evening. Thank you for having us. I'm Pat Nadel. I'm the CEO of Outer Cape Health Services. I looked back in the calendar, the last, it seems like time goes by so quickly. February 6th was the last time we were here. And that was more of an introduction to the project and, you know, and I think you may have said it earlier, I heard this evening, that, you know, we are funded by the federal government and we, this project is funded by a particular loan and the government has worked a little slower this year because they've been in a bit of a transition. So, we haven't been sitting on our laurels, but we've had a long time to wait for approvals. So, I think I'm here to be a little, far more deliberate in our planning process. We thought maybe tonight we'd walk you through where we are and a timeline going forward so you get a general idea of what we're thinking about and it'll have a lot more action words in our sentences. How's that sound? Okay?
Thank you.
All right, thank you. Stop me at, for any questions at any time. You don't have to wait to the end if it's easier to do that. Is that all right?
Great.
Okay. Could you advance the slide? Thank you. So, the last time we were here, we talked about the project. We are at the, the old Kennedy Building, this, at 710 Route 28. It's right across from Brax, at Sacagawea Harbor. We have moved our administrative space to the second floor, so that's pretty full. There's about 36 or so folks, 36, 38 folks, who are working there on a regular basis. So, that, that second floor is pretty full. Our plans now, as I said, we waited. We had approval for the health center to be built at a different site, the Stone Horse property. And we had to request that the federal government would reconsider and move that loan request to a different location, so that's what took a little bit of time. We submitted that during election period, so you can imagine it probably added a little bit more time to that. So, we did get, received approval for that in April and that's when we began to do some exterior work, some interior testing with the, with the engineers. And we actually hired an architect and started working on design around Labor Day. That takes about 12 weeks. So, we now have a design for 18, an 18-room health center. There's a capacity for 27. We felt that 18 would suffice for now. We don't want to overbuild. There's a whole section, you'll see it in one of the versions of the, you did get the, it's in your packet this evening as well. But it's an 18-room health center. It's, it, services will probably, will primarily be primary care. We'll have behavioral health services and substance use disorder services along with that. Supportive services along with social workers and other folks. We will have a lab area. Right now, our folks who visit us in, on Chatham Road go to the Quest Labs in town. They'll have, we'll have a Quest Lab right in the building, which will make things a whole lot easier for folks. We'll also have a dispensing pharmacy, which means we won't have a big retail, you know, we're not into competition with the retail pharmacists in the community, so it really is for dispensing prescriptions for our patients, which make it a whole lot more convenient and a one-stop. And we are developing what's called a community wellness space. And this is where, in many of our day-to-day interventions, we're working outside of our space in the communities with other agencies, the food bank, WICAN, people who are working on transportation or housing, councils on aging. And oftentimes, what we're hearing is some of those agencies would just like to come and meet with our clients on our site. So, we are developing a multiple-use space. We are piloting right after the first of the year, interestingly, with the food bank putting food in the clinic. It's called a prescriptive pantry, where folks who should go to the food pantry, who don't go, seem to take it more seriously when their doctor writes them a prescription to go. So, and then leave with a starter kit and then follow up in the food pantry. So, they're already doing this in the Boston area, so the Boston Food Bank is really pushing. They're the delivery, you know, they really supply all the food to the Cape. So, we're working with the Harwich Food Pantry and the Boston Food Bank to start that as a pilot. So, we'll expand that when the, when the site opens, which really should be very beneficial for folks. That'd be great. Okay. So, with the concept design, the top of the, that, on the very top of the design, we'll, that is sort of our future state, that's our expansion place. And this has, you know, our, our final version's slightly different than this, but technically we have two pods that will open and a pod is a workstation surrounded by nine rooms. So, the team works in the center of the workstation. There are eight medical rooms and one behavioral health room in each pod, so that a behavioral health provider is, is onsite in the building throughout all the days that we're open. So, that will be very, very helpful. We have WIC, we have an office for WIC in Orleans. That office is moving into the site also. So, we'll be seeing folks in there and we'll still have our healthy connections, people who help folks find insurance. So, it is, we're now, maybe going to, can you advance the slide, please? The outside plans, we'll probably have about 95 parking places onsite. We're working through some of the requirements as we speak. Our, in fact, the, I think, where Charlene just left, our, our folks, our architect and our engineer and our legal counsel meeting tomorrow with, I think, Megan in health, I think, to go through some of the septic requirements, the water flow, things like that. And then we'll be, we're looking to submit our documents. I think they submitted today for the, to request the planning board's review, so we'll be, that went in today. So, all of these things are in, in process. Next slide, please. Okay, so the proposed schedule. We are in final design, construction documents. We've submitted to the Department of Health on December 1st. The Department of Health has to review our, our entire design and approve that before we can move forward. So, the design is actually designed and created with their checklist in mind, so they have this checklist we kind of stick to in terms of the outline. So, that went in on December 1st. We hope to, to, we hear back with them right after the first of the year. Our cost estimator is actually coming in tomorrow to look at the site, begin to look at the documents, begin to, and then will provide us a cost estimate in January. We have started to work with the Cape Cod Commission, got very good response from them, and so we hope to be right through that process. Hopefully, we'll start the Department Health Part Two, which is if they come back with any suggestions, we have to resubmit again. So, this is the time for all the permitting and the design stuff. And then we will, we hope to be working through the town and the planning board in the town through February, hopefully, and then sometime early March, be able to go out to bid and start the construction by the end of March, beginning of April. It's about an eight-month, seven, eight-month project, all in, inside the building. The only major external piece of the building, because we have to prepare the building for the, for floodplain mitigation, so the front of the building is wood and those windows, if you have gone by before, the windows have to be replaced anyway, but the knee wall has to be concrete. So, that's probably the most external activity one will see. And then we'll be putting in some external, as the, as the engineer calls it, trying to put the building in a bathtub to meet the requirements for the floodplain. So, hopefully, we'll be able to provide the planning board with all the details behind any of that. So, we're hoping to have a ribbon cutting November of next year, so we'll be open, which will be really important because I think it's, you know, for us to, this area has such a, an incredible need to access providers. We get 10 to 20 calls a day in our little five-room center here that's on Chatham Road looking for someone, a doctor to see, to establish with. So, the need is so great. And then as we begin to say, okay, we're booking way out in the future. And so, this will be an enormous benefit. We are, we're really excited about being here and being able to provide that service. So, questions?
Excellent. Thank you very much. Larry, do you want to start?
I think it's a good update. It's amazing how many different things have gone at the same time to get this moving forward. But they are, they have met, the town's been very cooperative. They've met with the town departments several times already, I think.
Yes.
And as Pat says, they're coming back in, in a few weeks. But I think this is important to always keep the town involved and informed as well. So, good luck with all the work.
Well, thanks. We had a meeting this past couple of weeks ago and it was really important. We thought, why don't you get back and let the selectmen know what's going on? It's important for them to understand the process. Just as we're beginning to talk in other departments about it, this way you're up in front of it a little bit, too. So, it was a great suggestion.
Pat, because it comes up, I know it's been a discussion, but the effect that you may have on our emergency services.
Sure. We are not going to do urgent care. You know, we've decided, you know, we don't feel the need to compete with Cape Cod healthcare in the urgent care business. And so, we aren't going to, we have, always have a walk-in for, you know, same day and someone always appears in the clinic that probably shouldn't be there with symptoms that, that should have been in the emergency room. But we are not going to, hopefully, we aren't going to invite any further ambulance runs. You, we'll see a few every, you know, one or two a week from the, the current center. We may see a few more just because we'll have more traffic, but we are not going to compete for that. I'll just say to you also that the project, because we were able to move the project from Stone Horse to this new site at 710 Main, is, it's about $6.5 million, which is about 50% less than what the original project was going to be. So, it is in our reach, both financially and it's in our reach in terms of the timeline, being able to get it done. So, this made a much more practical solution and I think that's important also, so.
Thank you.
Other questions?
Thank you for your presentations. Really informative and helpful. The only question I have is, you mentioned 95 parking spots. Are they all on that site?
Yes. Yes. In fact, there's a, in fact, that's slightly more than we have today because when we, again, treat the outside of the building for the floodplain, the loading docks that dip, there's two loading docks on the side of the building, we're going to fill it in, they'll be straight and we'll be able to create some, I think they're going to actually be able to increase handicap parking against the building.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Don?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. As a legal guardian for one of your ongoing patients, I'm real happy that you're expanding, but even more gratified is selecting that you've chosen Harwich to do the expansion, both from an accessibility to care perspective and quite frankly, also because of the economic development possibilities. So, really appreciate it. Looks like a great project. The only follow-on I have to Julie's question is, and I know, having gone, done my time in the planning board, that there's a difference between a site plan and the reality. You do believe that you can contain the parking that you need onsite, right?
I think that we're going to have a conversation with the planning board about parking because they're going to be, we believe there may be a summertime challenge, but we're going to see if we can, we've got some options to present to the planning board to help to mitigate that, so hopefully that will satisfy what we think. You know, the harbor's going to have some additional activity. We, our first summer of opening will be in '19, so we'll have some time, but I do think that the planning board is going to be questioning some of that and we have, we have an opportunity to provide some options.
I say that not just because of the harbor, but also because it's, it's a state highway.
Yeah, absolutely.
If people started crossing the street, it would be kind of anathema to what we were trying to accomplish in the first place, to keeping them on each side respectively for the activities.
Absolutely.
But again, thank you. This is going to be terrific.
Thank you. Well, we thank, thank you, too, because we have gotten nothing but help and support and, and good advice from working with every department and every one of you as well, so thank you. We're really, we're excited to be here and we're excited to continue to move this project forward.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Chris had something.
I just want to, in case people in the community, what we do is when projects come forward, we certainly, from an administration standpoint, really appreciate your effort to kind of take a building and put it into more active use. But we have had meetings, those are informal meetings that we have with staff to make sure we can kind of highlight any issues that may come up with the hopes that as you go through the process, it's as, as quick and painless as, as it can be. But when it gets in front of these boards, it'll be up to the boards and committees to make those determinations. And staff just makes recommendations to try to assist, have the project go smoothly. And that is something that we offer not just to, not just to this group, but any group that has an interest in coming to town. We want to establish a dialogue as early as possible. So, in this case, the, the town is doing quite a bit of activity across the street at Sacagawea Harbor and we want to make sure we coordinate those activities so that we both coexist in a, in a equitable manner.
Absolutely. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you for your presentation.
Thank you very much for your time.
Next up is CEVAC, extension of the Round 1 adder. Last year, the Board voted a half a cent adder to the CEVAC for us, for our Round 1 solar project, with the understanding that they may have to come back for a Year 2 adder. The Round 1 adder was, was basically because the model, or where they were going was unsustainable. If I'm doing, if I read the spreadsheet correctly, it cost us roughly $18,000 for the Half a Cent adder. Chris had given a presentation to us last year, or at least did the exploration of what it would cost us to do this work on our own and believed that it was going to exceed that Half a Cent adder. So, Liz Argo is here tonight from CEVAC if we have any questions. If we don't have any questions, I would open this up for motion. Any questions from the Board? Can I get a motion?
Mr. Chair, I move that we, sorry, just to, approve the CEVAC extension of the Round 1 adder for FY '19.
At?
At.
Sorry.
A cent.
At half a cent.
Per kilowatt hour.
Per kilowatt hour.
Second.
Moved and seconded to approve the request to you approve the Half a Cent adder for one more year. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you, Liz.
No good deed goes unpunished.
I like that.
Okay, next up tonight, Tony Harwich Information Technology Infrastructure and Resource Review. Foster Banford, our IT Director, along with Scott Tillsley.
Yeah, what I'd like to do, Mr. Chairman, is I'm going to invite both of them up and they can sit at the table up front. The Board had asked for kind of review of IT operations and I just want to really extend my appreciation to both Foster and Scott that agreed to take this on and to go through. So, this is their initial report of what they found in the town and their recommendations for short and long-term, longer-term solutions to some of our IT issues that exist.
Thank you, Chris.
This was not with the package, the other was there because of the big drawing, hard to see on the clay.
So, we have a paper update to the IT presentation.
You had to go there. I did.
Please ignore that. Well, good evening. Very dumb part of the introduction, Scott Tillsley, Lieutenant with Harwich Fire Department, Foster Banford. So, as well as taking care of my firefighting and paramedic duties, I also do some of the IT work down at the Public Safety Building.
Thank you.
Where I work closely with, with Foster. Last year, there was a request by the Police Department for an additional IT resource. And in the discussions related to that, it was agreed that there's definitely a need for more IT resources within the town. And subsequent to that, Mr. Clark asked us to sort of just, to sort of try to quantify that, sort of paint a picture of how the IT world is in the town. So, Foster and I met with a number of the departments or representatives just to talk to them about how they're currently using technology and IT to perform their functions within the town. From those discussions, we created a visual representation of IT use within the town. We put some narratives together. The selectmen, I think we, you were given a packet, a full packet of all the material. I don't see a lot of value in going through all the details there. I think we could just talk quickly about the map. And I think even though, even though we're a town government, a lot of people relate to us as a, as a business. And honestly, we're the size of a mid-sized business when you talk about the number of people and, and, and infrastructure that we've got here. But we don't simply produce a widget or a particular service. We do, we do a lot. We provide, you know, law enforcement, fire and medical services, road maintenance, refuse management, planning and engineering, leisure and sports, tax levying, collecting and voting, and that's just, that's probably just a, a small snapshot. And we're increasingly driven by new state and federal mandates and our adoption of independence on technology is growing every day. So, in our meetings with the various departments, all the representatives sort of highlighted on their, their desire for, for more access to technology, more access to sharing data, more access to Acela and Munis and boards and so forth. So, our need isn't going to shrink, it's going, it's going to grow. So, Foster's going to take us, just a little bit through this map that shows just a little bit about our IT.
Okay, thank you, Scott. The map, excuse me, get a little confusing on the, on the display here, but I'll try to just bring it into focus in the broad areas. Up in the upper-left, there's a list of areas where we access data or services from the, from the state that, and some of the departments that support us. As you can see, it says the Groom County Retirement, voter registration, FEMA, Department of Revenue, the Department of Local Services that I know you're all familiar with are among those services. We access all those over the internet that goes through our, goes through our firewall for security. And up in the top center of the display or the drawing, there are a number of services that we access also through the internet, cloud-based services that support, almost all of our departments have one, in one way or another, get, get services from this, this type or this type of support. We get, you know, as you have heard a lot recently, our permitting in the community development area uses the Acela service, which is a cloud-based service. The COA has The COA has its database in a company called ServTracker that's based in Florida. The DPW has Gasboy and Waste Works. And the Public Safety has Collision Reporting from Crash Logic. We use Invoice Cloud for processing our finances through, actually through quite a number of services, including Acela and the payments, payments through the sticker tracker when you buy any of the permits. We, our DPW uses developed construction costs from a company called RS Means on the web. We have our website, we have PK, the assessing database. Work order system that the DPW uses called I-Works. There are more that you can, I just wanted to give you an idea of the quantity of things that are cloud-based, that we rely on internet access. And when we use internet access, it means our network here, our firewall, and all the infrastructure that we've set up here to provide safe and consistent, and I guess I'd like to say high-speed access, which, and I think it is, we do get a pretty good access through our Comcast internet. We have, we have access to the cloud-based system from CEGIS, which is a much more secure system, because it contains data that the Police Department uses, and it's meant to be very secure. We have our nine eleven system that just recently got an upgrade. I'm sure we've all, we all depend on that service. In the internal circle, in the middle of this diagram, are services that we provide from our local servers. We have Munis, which is based in a service, our server in Town Hall. We have our ShoreTel system, which is our phone server, and provides, provides phone access to three of our buildings, the Public Safety, the Library, and Town Hall. And has the potential to expand as we get more, as we expand our network services. We run an antivirus server here at Town Hall, which provides services to the Public Safety Building, and actually, the same services, it supports services for all of our computers. We do video recording, we do voice recording at the Public Safety Building. We have backup servers and print servers and file servers, so those all run internally. And on the bottom, it's meant to show the diversity of the departments that we support. So, as you can see, there's about twenty different departments here, and as Scott stated, the diversity of the items that we support in town are, when you start looking through them, as you do every week, it's pretty incredible, the diversity of services that we provide and the support that they need to provide those services is what we're trying to depict here. Okay, I think that kind of covers this.
So currently, the IT department is sitting to my right. Now, of course, he gets some help. I mentioned I do some of the IT work, along with Mark Harris at the Police Department. Jamie is a full-time IT person that does some video stuff on the side, I think. And then I think each of the other departments has their resident expert. And I think that's not a bad setup. You have resident experts in each of your departments, and I think that's always going to be the case. But I related it to a business earlier, and I think that if you went into any business of comparable size, you'd find an IT staff of five or six. I'm not saying we need five or six, I need, we need more than one. And so, part of this was also the precursor to suggesting that we need an IT help desk person, probably. We included a couple of org charts in the packet. So we were thinking that, you know, year one, we'd like to add an IT help desk person that sort of focuses on your day-to-day tasks, your PC setup, your print servers, the questions that come up every day with a hundred and seventy users. That would allow Foster to focus on a little bit more strategic stuff, to help make sure that we're getting the bang out of this, that we've got the security in place, that we have the antivirus in place, that we're meeting legal requirements and providing information, that we're backing things up and so forth. And then I actually see that in a couple of years, we add an application person, a systems analyst, somebody who focuses on Acela and Munis and the GIS, and helps our departments get some of that, more of that efficiency that I think we all expect, that we want, and that provides a better level of service. And I think, I think that that really is, Foster was able to get some numbers from some of the surrounding towns, Mashpee and Orleans and Dennis, and, you know. That's in line with what they have for supporting their infrastructures.
Do you have that graphic, right?
Yes.
That was just out.
Yep.
Staffing?
Yes.
Scott, first and foremost, thank you for being here. I recognize you're on the Fire Department, and you're not an IT person, and thank you for your help. Foster, thank you for what you do, and I think there's been a lot of comments generated in emails and about systems. Any of my comments have nothing to do with your performance, I think you're an outstanding IT person. So, my issues really are the, my issues when we get to meet are really the softwares that we're using, the network that we're on, and how far behind we seem to be, and maybe we're equal to other towns, not reflective on the staff at all. So, Larry, I'll start with you.
Oh, thank you, and I agree, great job, you know. Scott, we go back to open-cape discussions, which, let me, let me comment, though. We have a lot of diversity in town, I appreciate that. In your investigation, did you go back to the ground, kind of jargon, to the ground level and look at what people's needs are, what I'm getting at? Since a lot of the departments built their own system first, did you go back and look at, say, all the departments use the same database? Would that make it, make our lives easier? I know a lot of the department had GIS first, and we piggyback onto that. I'd be for looking at this and seeing, obviously, there are systems in fire and police and, you know, buildings that are separate. But I'd like to have a, go back and look at ground level and say, you know, what is needed? You know, that database, and so we could structure that across, maybe save us some effort and make it less diverse and less confusing. And I didn't see that in these documents, and that'd be a question I would ask, and if you could pursue that, that discussion.
Sure, Larry, that's on a, that's on a level that's up, that's up here, for sure. And I know you're talking, you're talking about foundational level, but when you talk about complexity, it's up here.
I'm talking about just being sure that all the departments use, where possible, the same, you know, database is a database, now you can pull that out in separate ways. But, you know, somehow, in some cases, we've created different, different, and this, you know, let's try to simplify it, give ourselves a break. In terms of the organizational chart, I mean, this is good. The question I would have, in terms of, if you will, position descriptions for IT, would it make sense to separate out a hardware expert and a software expert? And the people we're going after, so, because, you know, they can be quite functionally different positions, of hooking everything up, being sure it's all working, that you can connect. And as opposed to software, a web design, you know, that type. And I think it's, it's really difficult, and Foster, you've been doing a great job trying to get at this, but it's, it's a broad activity to ask one person to do and keep that going. So that'd be the, sort of the nuance, if you will, I would ask you, consider the organizational chart. We definitely need more resources, I'm not questioning that. I'm just questioning how would we position that.
I think you're right, and our names might have been a little bit mixed up here, but the, those two positions that we're suggesting, they really are sort of a hardware and a software person. The hardware person does more of the help desk stuff, answers some questions, whatnot, but they really are hardware.
Be sure we're all hooked and all the systems are working, I mean, that's no easy task. But then it's a spatial skill too, to be sure the webs look good, and that's, you know, that's what I'd be pushing.
Julie?
First of all, thank you for, I know it's a lot of work, and I know that there's a lot of pieces entailed in all of this. And so, I think you've identified areas where, you know, we have, we serve a lot of purposes. And I think to that, to that element, we have to look to the future and definitely upscale what we're able to provide, and, you know, improve it. So, anything in terms of, I agree, one person, you know, you have a lot on plate, being one person. So I definitely see a need to increase that support. And then, to Larry's point, if there is a way, and again, I know you don't build this kind of thing overnight, but to be able to sort of bring the different softwares into a uniformed manner or ability, so that maybe you have, you know, a certain software that everybody can use, but they can sort of tweak to their, to their needs. And maybe ultimately, as it costs us initially upfront, in the long run, maybe it costs us less, you know. So I just appreciate the report, and I know that we have a lot of work to do, thank you.
Don?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Actually referring to Larry's former comment, it's even more bifurcated than that. The software is not the same as the web design and web mastering, that's yet another skill. Not everybody who does the one does the other. I do want to point out to people who may be watching this either tonight or on the internet, that we've achieved a certain amount of operational efficiencies because of this over the last decade. So without, without this, it would have been much more expensive to operate, because everybody comes to a window, has to come into Town Hall maybe two or three times on the same transaction. The poll papers, to bring them back, go over things. So, it's incredibly important that this work. But having said that, I'm also somewhat concerned, Foster knows, I work on computers myself, and I got a question that, given proliferation of malware or viruses and everything, who are we using for that? Because we've got tax-based documents, we've got births, we've got deaths, we've got voting records. If anybody should have to worry about vulnerabilities, it would be us, because the people who live in this town are looking to us to secure their data. Are we using an off-the-shelf product, or?
Well, we, we have firewalls, a firewall here called Sonic Wall that includes virus scanning and intrusion prevention. We, all our email runs through a external service, so it gets scans for viruses and spam, basically. And actually, what we find is only about eighty-five percent of our, the email that's addressed to us actually gets let through our, that service. So, much, much of the email is scanned, and.
Norton as well.
And we have semantic or Norton endpoint protection, which is loaded on each machine. So, everybody, whenever they open a file, gets a scan of that file before it's opened. And that's updated multiple times a day, the database that it's scanning with. So, there's a lot of levels of protection here, but what you bring up is a valid point. It's, there's, you can make it hard for the viruses and malware to get in. You can't guarantee that it won't get in.
Now, we should do more.
Yeah.
And we don't, and we don't use Kaspersky.
Neither do I, out of ethical reasons. But, and that's kind of why, for people who want to initiate all this kind of stuff, even the best of these companies are up at ninety-six to ninety-eight percent efficiency. I'm looking at the two to four percent that gets through. And I'm actually thinking of self-executing programs that collect data more than I am about a virus intrusion. So, it just worries me, especially given, especially given how vast the usage is.
I'd like to comment too, that I know Michael had been working with Chris on grants, and Chris suggested one that was a cybersecurity company that would, that would look at our overall system, our setup, and we did win that.
We did get awarded that.
We got awarded, not a hundred percent of it, but eighty percent, I guess, so we can supplement, and.
Every little bit helps.
So we'll be, yes. And we'll be doing that, I think it has to be done by May. So, sometime in the spring, we should be able to get that scheduled.
So we are doing a risk assessment, then.
Yes. We got a grant from our insurer to do that.
Terrific. Chris, was that what you wanted out, or do you have?
No, I actually, I just wanted to kind of give people a little bit, I get where we're kind of, I think, some of the ideas, and I just wanted to make sure that, that there's always room for improvement. And I think one area in my time that I've been here, we had, I think at one point, we had six different websites on six different platforms, and we've now consolidated those down to, I think, one or two. And I think where we have those opportunities to scale down, we are doing it. Part of the problem when we have, it's actually in total twenty-two different divisions, is some of those divisions, again, we operate in a realm that's not just our own world. So, I know just from my own experience on voter registration, the state says, thou shalt use our computer, thou shall have that computer dedicated only for voter purposes. So, there is a fair amount of specialization that has to occur. Whenever we get the opportunity, I mean, we have the system where we have the shared drive, so we're not having a lot of people keep things on their own machine. We are using as much as we can, those economies of scale. Acela, we've consolidated, where it's five or six departments are now using that same software database. But there are ones, IMC, which is really the report writer that tracks all the ambulance runs and other calls. Some of those things are so specialized that we're not going to be able to, you scare me to say about Access Database, because when I started way back when, I was given the Access Database handbook.
Well, that's an example, I get the part that.
Design these out. So, I mean, I get what we need to do, and I think the websites, those are what we're looking for. The problem here is, it's too much for just one person. And what happens is, he's putting out fires, he's doing the basics, and we don't get to do any of the more strategic level thinking, we're doing everything at the tactical level. And I think that, when you look at the staffing and what some of the other towns are doing, I think if we can, and they have submitted a budget that has an additional person in it, and, you know, I think that's something that we're going to have to seriously look at. One of the things, just, I know the board has, you know, we're trying to do the no new hires. The board has asked for other things to be looked at, and one of the things that I will look at, and I've done this in other towns, is how do we restructure? Is there opportunity to take some savings in one area or restructure somebody and try to maybe not fully realize all the costs, but at least partially realize some of those costs? So we can transition from a records clerk that may be more paperwork-oriented, as an example, into using some of those dollars to help with IT. So that's what we will hopefully see in the budget, we have the budget. Most departments have their budgets in, so we will start to digest that during the month of January and see what we can present to the selectmen that will be obviously balanced and as close as I can to meeting the goals that are laid out. But I just want people at home, because not everyone realizes that if it was a private sector company and you just do one, one software package for everybody, if you're making widgets, that works. Unfortunately for us, whether sometimes it's the state mandating it or the complexity of what they're getting into, doesn't lend itself to that kind of interaction. But where we have those opportunities, we certainly are trying to maximize those.
Thanks, Chris. So this started last year budget season, as Scott said, with the Police Department wanting another IT person, and us looking at and having the conversation that we have an IT person, it seemed, for each different major department. Water Department uses their own, you do the Fire Department, and some of the police. Police calls in somebody on occasion. So, Chris, I appreciate your comments, strategic versus tactical. But how much of this, and are we just adding employees to continue to put Band-Aids on actual problems? So if I look at the comments that you made on Acela in the report, slow and painful, how long are we going to stay with Acela? And I think those are the answers that I'm looking for is, and Chris, I appreciate that you're going to. and, and Chris, I appreciate that you're going to present it in a budget and, and maybe add the piece of what the county can possibly offer, which we've talked about. What other towns are using, I know you've got numbers up here for, for what, but are they bringing in other people, some actual numbers? How much of this is because we're using antiquated software, because we're using an old network, because we're continually trying to fix something that we bought that we may not want to abandon? Munis is another one that I think I've heard every single person in the building that uses Munis curse Munis. Um, and I know other communities are, are getting away from Munis. So, if it's a big decision and, and us going in a different route, I would rather make that part of this and an actual IT, rather than put a Band-Aid and just hire more people to do what you're doing.
Well, I, just reaction wise to that, I, you know, there, there is, uh, Munis has a few big competitions. And what Munis is, is it's an accounting program that we put all the bills in and it records it. Munis is actually a, a great document or a great software package for our compliance with our auditors and with the DOR. It's not friendly for departments that have to key in there. I, I keyed in about fifteen or sixteen budgets myself and I have to constantly refresh myself on Munis. It's not intuitive. But Munis is probably a five or six hundred thousand dollar software that if we were going to change to KVS, then certainly we can do that. But some of these things have fairly big dollars attached. And I would at least suggest that if we're going to look at that, we just want to look at it systematically, take a, a software a year and, and see what's out there. Uh, because some software is good today and maybe not good tomorrow. The Acela, Acela's a hard one for me because the board really wanted me to implement that. We have implemented it, it is functioning, it's functioning about as efficiently as, as we're going to get it. Uh, we have partnered up with Yarmouth. And that, you know, do we, do we move off a four years' worth of effort and find something else? And, you know, the, the, I'm, I'm not a big fan of salesmen. Salesmen will tell you whatever you need to hear to, to buy their product. It's a good salesman that actually follows up and makes sure the product does what they deliver. And that is few and far between in my experience. So, I, I just think we have to be systematic because it, it can get into big dollars. And I think having the additional resources, actually, we've had a lot of contact with Yarmouth. And you could see that they have people, they have someone that's able to focus in on how Acela, what the Acela problems are and helping us work through that. So, having staff resources, to me, to my way of thinking, isn't really just adding staff. It's adding effectiveness and efficiency in the way we're using that technology that we currently have.
So, Chris, I guess what I'd like to know is, um, looking at my, my question, are, are we adding more to continue to put Band-Aids on something that's bad? Whether we take a, a bite out of the apple or the whole apple is going to be a budget talk. But I'd like to know how much of this is due to antiquated networks and systems and, as we, as we go forward.
That part, you know, Munis, just, that's not an antiquated technology. I mean, that's state of the art. So, some of the systems we have, Foster probably knows better, I mean, we have a lot of up-to-date. We may not be, you know, we're not a tech company that, that is as up-to-date. But I don't think we're as far behind, uh, other municipalities, for instance. Maybe in some areas, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Chairman, if you just, you know, I don't work in this building, but I'm certainly aware of the network as a whole between public safety, this building, the library and the, and the, and the community center. It's a fiber optic network. It's, it's kind of state of the art. It's, uh, really, we, we do pretty well. Um, are there pockets within it that could have some congestion? Sure, maybe. And, you know, we're certainly with the, with the, uh, applications that are hosted on the internet, you're, you're bound by your connection to the internet and, and other internet traffic. But, um, I think we're doing okay, uh, in the town, if we're talking just about network. It's more than that though, right? It is, it's Munis, it's, it's Acela, it, it's all these things. And certainly, uh, by freeing up Foster's time a bit, maybe we could get back to the tactical and strategic argument and, and replacing one of those at a time.
Julie?
So, just to comment with the Acela, so I, you know, I haven't done much online with Acela here in town. But I can say that there are permitting programs out there that are working really well. Marshfield, Gloucester, a couple other towns. So, I do think that, you know, to the chairman's point, some of it is software, must be. Because there are other softwares that are working pretty well and turning permits and such. And like I say, I'm not commenting specifically on turnaround time. But I know a while back, when it was still, it was, it was probably like only a year ago though, when it was already in, in existence for about three years, it was still fairly slow. So, I think if we can look at some of those pieces, and again, I'm not a computer person. So, if it means that we, you know, we can't really sort of, you know, put things under one system and, and specialize them in the various departments for what they need, if that can't be done, then we should look at certain areas that don't seem to be working really well. Like if Munis is what we need in finance and it works well and those who need it understand it and it works. But if it doesn't work in other departments for, for billing and such, then we should probably look at something that works better for the rest. And again, I understand that it's a cost. But I would like us to see some of that as well as another person. And again, I get it, it's a budget issue. But I think we have to, in order to move ourselves forward, we can't be behind the curve. We'd be kind of a...
Larry?
And, uh, Chris, I want to pick up on a comment you made a couple weeks ago or, or maybe longer, that while the difficulties with Munis may be that we're not using, uh, packages that are available on Munis. And so, you know, maybe we don't have to look at replacing all of Munis. Maybe, maybe we need to spend a few more dollars and get those packages working so it's more, it's more user-friendly. So, I'd like that to be part of the discussion as well. Acela is a spatial, uh, uh, concern because it, I guess it's coming back a bit, but for a while, they couldn't, uh, I know the health department couldn't get, uh, redos because it wasn't working right. And that's used by a lot, it's just not Yarmouth, that's used by a lot of towns on the Cape. So, I still, four towns, I, I can't believe we can't put, get all the four towns together and put some muscle on Acela to...
We are.
Have them take some action on that.
We are, we have joined, and Chris could elaborate on that, but we have joined with the other towns to, to try and work through this.
And one of the things with, with the Acela piece is, you know, I think it's important to, to kind of walk through. I mean, I had to learn the history to find out what, what we're doing. And, you know, the, the Acela piece was, the town of Yarmouth got a grant. The concept was, Acela has the Commonwealth of Mass, I think they have large counties in California. I mean, they're, they're a big outfit and, and that's what they specialize in permitting. The county came out and said, well, we'll, we'll subsidize, and they have been subsidizing since we've had it, bringing Acela on board. And each of the four towns, and the four towns, Chatham, P-Town, Harwich and, and Yarmouth are the four. We've, we've decided to partner up together. But I, I think I mentioned this, maybe it was a, a few weeks ago. They've been bought three times from when the presentation was made to the Board of Selectmen. And in each time, they get a little further away, the, the help gets a little bit further away. And what we've done is we've created a user group to make it more functional. So, we are doing those workarounds, but on paper, you know, they're doing the Commonwealth of Mass. They started off with four towns and we were in the first wave. The idea was that everybody on Cape Cod would adopt that. And it just didn't work as, as sold to, to, you know, Cape communities.
I recognize Mr. Wastey.
Good evening, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Uh, just two points. On the public-facing part of Acela, I'm a Realtor and, and I interact with that consistently with the Board of Health. It's excellent. And, and for us to be able to access that information is tremendous and it's timely. I don't know the kinks inside. So, on one end, that public-facing part of Acela has been excellent, I know at least from my industry. On the other side of it, from the Council on Aging, we have computers within that department. The director's computer and, and the administrative assistants don't talk to each other. You know, so in one place, we're using a great software that's very, very good for the general public. Then we have an internal program where we don't have two really coworkers who can talk together with their computers. So, hardware in one space and one, one situation and then software in another, there's some disconnect. You know, and, and I know you've got two people looking at it, but at some point, isn't there a municipal consultant who could look at the overall package to see what we're doing right and what we need to really address it? And I don't know if folks are attending municipal program up in the state next month. I'm hoping you may find a few consultants who may be able to come, do something timely and cost-effective that might solve some of the problems.
Thank you. Julie's going to look into that when she's up there.
I'll be programming.
Don, go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Uh, building on, uh, what Richard said and what Julie said, it is kind of an odd duck, uh, because software's become commoditized. It's, it's kind of like a car or refrigerator, but in, in some of its aspects. But it's really odd in another way. It's kind of like buying a car and you keep working on it while you're driving it or when you're off the road. And eventually you have a car that's way different than the one you originally bought. Because they're, they're always upgrading these things. And at some point in time, you do have to take a step back and look and say, who's, who owns it? What does it really do for us? Who else is actually writing stuff, uh, that might be on a better platform? Because everything is always changing. I mean, Microsoft is actually now starting to chase, uh, Google because they're, they're deploying pretty much free cloud services for word processing and stuff. And schools are starting to adopt it, uh, which has kind of driven Microsoft to get out of the per copy business and get into the cloud business, uh, instead of having it on your computer. You, you have to step back because it is not the same environment it was ten years ago or five years ago and it may not even be the same as it was a year ago. And we're not building our own wheel. So, I'm guessing that there are people out there that, that are in that business of assessing your needs versus what you've chosen to deploy across your own networks.
I think the town administrator's got a good grasp on what our questions were and we'll look forward to this conversation again during budget. Budget. And thank you.
Thanks again.
Thank you.
Thank you for continuing the Band-Aids.
The problem I have is, it's a bit like the phone system. If it works, no one cares at all.
This looks just like my home.
It only comes out when it doesn't work.
Look, that's represents what my brain does. My brain's in the cloud. All right. Next up is the, actually, new business, releasing the Bell's Neck Cranberry Bog. The board's already weighed in on this and, and given it support to go out with an RFP. We sent it back to Amy, who went back to the Conservation Commission, who, as you read in your packet, voted to go back out to an RFP with the bog. I guess my only question is, from this, what do you need from us? Just to vote, unofficial vote?
Yes.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Amy Usowski, Conservation Agent.
Thank you.
Administrator.
Yes, essentially that's what we need. When I was doing some research on the Bell's Neck bogs and the past leases and how we acquired it, we actually acquired it in nineteen sixty-six. I have some information, just more for your information about how we took the, uh, we purchased it in nineteen sixty-six. And then, in, um, nineteen ninety-three, there was also a taking. So, that, it got a little convoluted. But in a document from two thousand and nine, which I believe was in your packets, it kind of made it unclear about who, yes, it's under conservation jurisdiction, but it is still technically town land. So, we did find that in nineteen sixty-six, it was purchased when there was an active bog there and that person's lease was allowed to continue. So, the use has always been there. So, I don't think, you know, her, the question about having to go back to town meeting, I think, is kind of moot. But, um, because the use hasn't changed. But you had, um, voted to support the recommendation for the Conservation Commission to release the bog, when in actuality, I think you actually also need to technically support on your own the bog, bog's going back out for lease. So, if you don't mind, I mean, I have some, Alan Hall actually came up with some great history and facts, if I can hand them out.
Great.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, well, she's passing that out. I mean, I read through the material and, and the gist of the, the material that I got was that, how a, a bog gets to be a town asset is, is relevant to the discussion. Uh, but then the second component is only the Board of Selectmen can, maybe a really oversimplification, but really only the Board of Selectmen can, uh, grant leases under the general law. So, I think, you know, maybe a, a step would be to have, uh, the Conservation Commission go and, and start doing the work on a request for proposals and get proposals in and then bring it to the Board of Selectmen for the award of the, the lease, whichever is most favorable to the town. Generally, maybe two steps. If you want to have them draft an RFP, make sure it has the elements that you guys want to see in it. That may be the advisable. And then the second would be to do the award after that.
You don't need a vote for us to say, get an RFP. Do you just need consensus or you want us to vote?
What you're gonna have.
To support it.
Okay.
Okay, I move we, uh, we support, uh, Harwich Conservation Commission to put out an RFP for releasing the bogs at the entrance to Bell's Neck Conservation Area off of Deep Hole Street.
Second. Moved and seconded to support, um, the motion is read. Any conversation, discussion? Don?
I just want to make a couple of comments, reading John Giorgio's missive here. There are a couple things. First of all, some of these, uh, purchases of the land were long before there was a land bank. And he keeps alluding to the land bank process. That's great, except that that didn't happen at least half of them. Second of all, I wasn't here in sixty-six, but I was here in two thousand when the two of them were, were discussed at town meeting. And they absolutely, as part of the discussion ramping up to the vote, were discussing how this would be great for bang for the buck. You're going to wind up with some conservation land, some heritage preservation by, by farming. And that brings me to the third part, to the extent that you want to do a bog, and this was always a concern. There's a time expiration date on this. I mean, if you, if you just don't do anything, that's an action by itself. All of a sudden, the pump house is no good and you can't, you can't run the bog. So, with all that in mind, this isn't being done in the dark of night or anything. I mean, the public was well advised about what it was that they were doing, both in sixty-six, based on what I'm reading. And I know for a fact, uh, some of the other purchases, it was an open discussion that it would have multiple benefits if we entered into this. Me personally, I'd just love to see getting back, just supporting the leases at the bog and working in partnership with the Consco.
Larry, discussion?
No.
Julie? So, my own, mine's only a comment. That bog's been leased five times since nineteen sixty-six. So, obviously, there's some paperwork there for the lease. Rather than certified organic or organic, I'd rather see best practices and not hold somebody to organic.
I think it would be an open-ended, um, at this point, it's open-ended and we see what we get back for proposals.
And, and in one of the documents that I read, it was, um, percentage versus a set amount a year. I think a set amount a year works better for the town.
The other ones are, and like this in the past has been ten thousand over ten years. Sometimes it's a thousand a year in some of ours. Sometimes at the beginning, especially because this bog needs a lot of work, you may want to do a lower amount like a five hundred, but then towards the end years, you do twelve fifty or something. But definitely set amounts as opposed to percentages, I think, are the way to go, is the way to go.
And then the last, which we don't need to get into a long conversation, I'm sure you'll look into it, but the water rights, pumping rights discharge?
Yes.
I, I think there's some question about whether there's a valid permit there that can be transferred or, because the town would have to hold that permit, not the leesee.
I do have the deed.
Okay.
That, that talks about water rights.
Great. Okay, now we vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Have a good night.
Thank you. The Personnel Bylaw, Seasonal Hourly Wage Schedule. Chris, sir?
So, we, I'll, I'll start off and then Eric Beebe's here tonight. One of the things that we looked at is when there was a change in the state minimum wage. It's kind of important that, that people understand that technically, a municipality isn't subject to the state minimum wage. However, there is a reality that we have to face. That if we were to keep our minimum wage at ten dollars an hour and the state's is eleven, then we're not going to get, you know, good people to come to work for us because we're going to be at the, the lower end of the spectrum for people that are interested in, in working. What we've historically done, uh, prior to that is if minimum wage was seven dollars, we would pay nine. So, we tried to maintain a, a, a market level, uh, number that we would be able to draw, uh, some of the, the people in and we would be able to fill these positions. And since the minimum wage has gone up, we have struggled more and more with that. So, the proposal that we have here, and Eric did most of the, the legwork on it, is to, to establish a new rate scale that reinstates what we had before, to go a dollar or two dollars above, uh, the minimum wage. Now, that is going to be around forty thousand dollars. And certainly, we need to make sure that we cover the costs on that. cover the costs on that additional. I think it's very important that we do that because we are starting to see some erosion in the recruitment and retention of people that work for us. And to that end, again, I'll give Eric credit, that if we do a $5 increase on the beach permits, that will generate about the $40,000 that we need. So I never believe in presenting something, you know, present a problem without a potential solution with it. But I think the problem in this case is that we need to maintain a level where we're going to be able to recruit talented people to come to work for us. And these are lifeguards, you know, these are not just necessarily positions that are very low-level, low-skill. They are positions that we want to make sure that we have a valuable employee there that we can retain. So I'll let Eric kind of...
Yeah. The problem lately has been, over the past couple of years, we've been doing, for our beach staff and our seasonal staff, through the rec department, like 2% or 25 cents per hour raises each year. And while that's been something, it's kind of like you said earlier, it's been a Band-Aid on a problem. This wage schedule would fix that problem. Even with those 2% increases, we find ourselves sliding further and further from the top or even the middle. Right now, we're one of the last as far as pay for lifeguards, beach supervisors, gate attendants. So this would really put us over the top. In the past few years, we've still been able to be fully staffed, and that's mostly because of our in-house training that we do right at the rec department. But lately, the past couple of years, also, we've lost some lifeguards. They've gone to Chatham, they've gone to Dennis, just because they can offer a lot more. Their middle, the average middle step is several dollars higher than our top step. So, you know, when college kids make the choice whether to come, start with us for $11, or go to Chatham and start, you know, for 13, it becomes an easier decision for them to leave. So this would really solve the problem and really get us some good recruits as well in the future.
Thank you, Eric. Start with Larry. Questions? Comments?
Oh, just a comment. I think you're talking less about minimum wage that we're reading in the paper all the time than being comparable to other towns that we're paying.
The two factors.
That we're paying compared to another town against the people. So we have to do that. We need the people. And I will point out that these salaries are paid by fees, more or less, right? The, don't begin from the parking stickers and the...
Well, for the lifeguards, they do technically come in as part of general fund. We do try to match up and offset, so we make sure we generate enough in general fund through fees to offset the operation. So it's not generally a tax, a general property tax obligation.
I don't think we have a choice.
Julie?
Yeah, I would agree. I mean, we saw this, just I think it was last year, with DPW needing to have an increase to get people to, so I appreciate it, but if I was a lifeguard, I'd want more than 1,450 anyway.
Don?
Building on that, it would be hard to justify having people pay for permits and then show up at a beach that's supposed to have lifeguard supervision and have no lifeguard. So we need to stay competitive.
Eric, I remember past conversations where we talked about lifeguards and the fact that Harwich didn't have a problem, I mean, I think as early as this last year conversation.
And we, yeah, we don't, you know, this past summer, we didn't actively have a problem. We're trying to be proactive with this, though, because we do see less applications coming in. So it's become more of, are we going to get enough people to apply to fill the spots, instead of interviewing all those that apply and picking the best applicants for the job?
Okay. Now, the work material that you did on this, showing what other towns charge, we didn't get to see that. Can we see that?
Yeah, sure. I could send it over to you.
Okay. That, and then, Chris, you mentioned, you know, raising a beach sticker. I mean, that's a public hearing, that's a whole nother conversation.
We will schedule a public hearing if you vote this and you want to continue to fund the program through the collection of fees, then the next step, logical step, would be to do the hearing on it. And Eric has drafted that up, and we have that.
I think it's posted for January 22nd right now.
So we are ready to go.
If I'm reading this correctly, you want to do a mid-year switch? I mean, instead of starting with the next budget, is this...
I think part of the rationale for this is that we, because the fiscal year starts July 1, so it's kind of a mid-year correction. Really, what we want to do is when we recruit people in May and June, make sure we capture it. So it's within this fiscal year that we'd want to have that adjustment.
And we will have the funds in our budget from FY '18 to cover, you know, the week or two that were open before July 1.
Okay. One striking thing I think I saw on here, Chris, was the assistant harbor master. Is that, John Rendon had put a letter in saying that it should be a grade eight, which I believe it got changed to a grade eight on this spreadsheet. But are assistant harbor masters only at $17 an hour?
That's the seasonal ones.
Okay, thank you.
Seasonal.
All right. Because I'm hoping he makes more than that. He does an awful lot of work. I don't want to assume that fees are going to pay for this, because that's, you know, if we're being asked to vote on this tonight, we can't be asked to vote on this tonight. A, I'd like to see the backup and see what other towns are doing, but we can't vote on this with the assumption that we're going to raise the beach sticker fees to pay this. Because I'm not going to support a resident increase in beach sticker fees. And I'll just throw it out there now. I think we're asking an awful lot of our residents regardless, with taxes and assessment, dump sticker, beach sticker, shellfish permit. So on the face of it, I don't want to approve this based on the assumption that we're going to get the money, and that it's not going to come out of a budget. My only comment.
Yeah, I would agree with that, but I would argue to go ahead and move this, so we have the people coming in, and then we take a gamble on how much we can do with the fees.
Yeah, you know, obviously, you guys pay me to kind of think things out. So there's two, I guess, two comments to that. One is, I think we should, you know, recommend that this go up. And then you can't make a contingent that it becomes effective after the funding is identified. If we do January 22nd and you don't vote, then I would recommend we go with the schedule, and what you will see is, we won't be able to hire as many people, because if we have the same amount of money, I mean, it becomes a math issue. If we have the same amount of money and we want to pay people more, then we have to hire less. So there is a, I don't want to call it a workaround, because you're getting less services. But I think that we can certainly have that discussion the night that the fees are, and if the fees don't go, then we have thought out a little bit the contingency. But, you know, I do worry about the comment, and I think Don makes a good comment, that are people that pay fees, the fees that we already have, going to a beach and not having anybody? You know, are we doing, but I think that we should have that discussion the night that we do the public hearing on the fee. But I don't see a reason why you couldn't vote this tonight contingent upon it going into effect February 1st or whatever, after the public hearing.
I guess I would ask, is this that time-sensitive, where it needs to be voted tonight before we have a public hearing and before we talk about? How time-sensitive is this, I guess?
As far as the rec goes, we don't have our seasonal people come in until beginning of June at the earliest.
I think we probably could wait till February 1st if you want to postpone this to January 22nd.
That makes sense. We have time.
When do you recruit, though? Not when they come in?
Yeah, well, that's the other issue. We take applications all through, you know, we're already getting some now, believe it or not. February, March. We had some lifeguards come to us at the end of last year and say they really want to come back, but they were wondering if there was any way that the money would be up a little bit. Because, you know, they've reached out to Chad. Every town needs lifeguards. So it would help us to be able to say that this is coming.
Okay. It's the board's pleasure.
I'd like to move that we accept the proposed schedule.
Okay, moved and seconded to approve the proposed rate schedule. Discussion?
No more.
Set? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Three one.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Eric. All right. Next up is the request for the planning board to design a time, place, and manner restriction bylaw for marijuana. This was on our agenda last meeting. John Giorgio spoke to us. We brought, we're bringing this back, but we have to vote this to get the planning board to have, to design the time, place, and manner bylaw.
I know last time I misspoke, but I believe that the reference is that the board has already asked for the moratorium and to not do it. This would be to have as a backup plan to regulate the time, place, and location. So in manner. So I think that the appropriate step at this point, I have to look at Charlene, because she's my now-town planner, that she would, this gets the planning board started in that, on that process.
Yeah, the board would be requesting that the planning board look at preparing a bylaw that would ultimately come back to you to get referred back to the planning board, thank you, Master General Law is being a little quirky, to get this going.
Thank you.
So this just gives them the impetus to...
I think a motion.
Mr. Chair, I move that we request the planning board to design a time, place, and manner restriction bylaw for marijuana, in the case that we should need it in 2018.
Second.
Moved and seconded to approve the request for the planning board to design a time, place, and manner restriction bylaw for marijuana. Any discussion?
Only let, I think last week when Mr. Giorgio was here, this was a time-sensitive issue we had to get going on, so we should move.
Any other discussion?
And this is for retail sales.
Yeah, for retail.
Right.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. Thank you, Charlene. Proposed Harwich Housing Committee Charge Revision. In your packet is a proposed revision. Julie, I think you've been working on this. It seems very self-explanatory. If there's no discussion from the board, I'd entertain a motion if we want to discuss it. Don?
So move.
Because if we can discuss it...
Then we can get the discussion.
If we can second, then we can discuss it.
Okay. Moved and seconded to approve. Discussion, Don?
Yeah, just two comments. One is, it's actually something Julie's been talking about quite a bit, and I feel strongly about. It doesn't say anything about non-capital A affordable stock. I mean, I'd kind of like them to look at that, the whole texture of housing, like affordable and also what else we can do for workforce housing.
I know. They didn't use the word workforce, but it did come in.
Sure.
Yeah, good evening. My experience is, when you say housing, it's the whole gamut. And mainly, it spells out. When you say housing to anyone, right away, they believe it's affordable housing. They don't think it's million-dollar housing. They think it's affordable housing. So, yeah, we can put it in there, no problem. You know, it's just, it's words.
Affordable and workforce would work for me, if you just add it.
Well, I think that, I think some of the reason I didn't ask for it to be further revised was because it also talks about current town properties suitable for multiple and single-unit housing. And then it does, I mean, it does say commercial property with affordable housing potential. You know, you might even want to just take that piece and just say, with housing potential, rather than affordable, because it could be both types. I mean, that would be an easy revision.
Well, my thinking and the committee's thinking was to just kind of keep it broad and simple.
I thought that.
You know, I wanted to stay away from the specifics. I've looked at other towns, and it was like you were given a homework assignment, and here, fill, finish this assignment, and then come back and get another one. This is broad, and it just, it's a broad brush.
Right, and to that point, I agree with you. I think keeping it broad is good. And so I'm suggesting to make it slightly broader by saying, under number three, where it says, identify existing housing resources in Harwich, where you have commercial property with affordable housing potential, you could make it broader by saying, commercial property with housing potential, rather than put affordable in there. It opens it up. It could be affordable, or it could be workforce. That's just a...
And my other comment was a geeky thought, but we've been down this road a number of times so far.
I'm not going there. Go ahead.
It says here, it is a five-member committee comprised of a chairman, secretary, and a member appointed to the community preservation committee. I would feel much more comfortable if it said, and an ex officio member appointed by the Board of Selectmen in accordance with Section 3-6-2 of the Code of the Town of Harwich. Because it's real, I mean, we really have been trying to make everybody aware that they are giving recommended appointments, but they're not confirmed until the Board of Selectmen votes them.
I'd go along with that. So that's one amendment, and you had the other. Just, so we're going to vote to approve this with the two amendments. And you're going to give those to Art, so he can...
Yeah.
Thank you.
And the other amendment is just to take out the...
Take out a word.
The affordable.
Take out affordable in number three, second bullet. Yeah.
Okay, so is the board clear on that before we vote?
Yep.
Any other discussion?
No.
This is in the first paragraph.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And please get those changes to Art, so he can rewrite it.
Thanks, Art.
Thank you.
Thank you, Art.
Thank you. All right, next up is FY '17 SEIU Salary Compensation Study. As mentioned earlier, we voted in executive session to approve administration's request to up some salaries. There was a compensation study. Chris, why don't you just give us an overview real quick of when that started?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Approximately two and a half years ago, we reached settlement with the SEIU Union. That's just the reference to the union. It's basically the managers in the community. In that, there's about 18 professional staff that are part of it. We had agreed, or they had negotiated with us, to look at six positions a year, starting in '16, '17, and then '18, to look at those positions and do a market rate analysis. Do we pay people in a equitable manner, not number one on the Cape, not number 10 on the Cape, but somewhere in the middle? So to that end, Charlene, my assistant, has been diligent, and we've met with the union on this. In this case, and I'll just read through the summary recommendation, on the treasurer-collector, we found that position to have no changes, that it was competitive with the marketplace. Town engineer required a little bit of a slight increase up. The natural resources director position, we found that that needed to be adjusted up. The computer coordinator, who was here tonight, the position was here tonight, that we did not make any changes, because that is in the market rate. Channel 18, station manager, we did recommend that that be adjusted up. The golf superintendent was also a position that was actually, that position was pretty much the lowest in the market, or towards the lower end of the market. So the way we've been implementing this is we put a certain amount of money in the budget each year to take care of these adjustments. In the first year, we budgeted 5,000. The total adjustments ended up at 30,000. We were that much out of whack. In the '17 analysis, which we're doing now, we budgeted $5,000 for this, and we were about $11,000. So as, I think when we initially talked to them and did the '18, they probably picked the worst ones that they thought, and that has come to fruition. So we have went out to the union, negotiated with them, and let them know the findings, and they are in agreement, and the board was in agreement in executive session to those changes.
Thank you. Any comments from the board on this?
No.
All set?
Yep.
Thank you. Next up is discussion of cell tower money being deposited into the housing trust fund. We don't have a housing trust as of yet, so this was a conversation. The cell tower money in East Harwich, the money goes into a housing trust fund now and is expended or approved or recommended by the housing committee for projects, and then the Board of Selectmen will approve it. So this conversation is with the board's support, taking that money and putting it into the trust, and to let the trust expend the money. and, and to let the trust expend the money. Don?
I'm totally agreeing with doing it. I was there when it was first established. But what I'm thinking the mechanism would be is rather than just automatically deposit the receipts into the new housing trust is that we would, as a matter of course, we have the authority under the town meeting action, but authorize dispersments each year to be sent to that or whatever, at whatever timeframe we decide is reasonable. But, that would not have us back at town meeting asking for permission. And it wouldn't just be car plunge that we don't know even what's going in, because we have now just diverted it all.
Right.
But if we do it that way, I assume that we could do that because we have that ability.
Julie?
Just to clarify, so, so at town meeting, we would ask for the ability to, to have it transferred, one?
We were conveyed the authority at town meeting, but we have to vote to disperse money. It doesn't say where we disperse it. So, we could do that as a matter of routine, that we disperse it towards replenishing our housing trust that we were starting.
Okay.
Yeah, I, I think that's actually a, a good course, because the way, just looking at the language, town meetings set up a structure how they wanted to do it. They did defer to the selectmen so that the money is generated. The way that town has done it this pa, I think this past year or last year, you had an application or a request that was made before the board from the Habitat folks for the project out in West Harwich. I, I think what's being suggested here is administration or the housing trust, once it's formed, will put in a request to have that money for a certain amount for that year be expended to go into the trust to, to kind of help with seed money.
Okay, I get it.
So, I think it's more just a process that could be followed and not necessarily get into having to go to town meeting and make all these changes.
That's what I'm trying to avoid. Okay.
Art?
Yes, when I saw this on the agenda, I brought this up and I asked a question. But, the question I have is, do we have an accounting tonight of what's in this fund right now?
Not tonight. Chris, too.
I didn't, I didn't look it up.
Yeah, we do not have one tonight. And I know that, I know that when we voted on the Habitat project last year, we expended twenty-five thousand and thirty, thirty-five thousand. I believe we were in the negative.
Yeah.
Right, we were in the negative.
Right. So, I don't believe, I believe with this year's money, we'll replenish it, but.
We were in the negative when we voted the two forty, the Habitat, I believe.
Okay.
Yeah, we were in the negative. I think at the time of the vote, subsequent to that, I think available funds will cover that. But there's not much left in it until it replenishes on the monthly basis.
Well, if, if it's on a piece of paper, it's nice to know what we have. Every, you know, there's four opinions up here and a fifth, a sixth one here of what's in there.
We'll announce it on January eighth.
Eighth, I'll be here. Thank you.
Okay, Chris.
Yeah, we actually, we got the bill, so she wouldn't process it unless we had adequate money to pay. I mean, we did get a request.
An accounting would make sense, yeah.
Okay. We'll get the number.
Okay, any other comments? Old Business, request to approve remote participation for planning board member David Harris. Julie, you weren't here last week. We had this, we had discussion on this. I chose to bring it back this week because there was only three board members. And we would have needed a unanimous vote for it to pass. Don had some concerns on it, which I'll let Don say his concerns on it. But I, I, I was fine with it. Larry was fine with it. We're a little concerned with quorums on the planning board at this point. This is one full member. At this point, we do not have two alternates. And I don't believe the alternates can vote on the planning board anyway.
No.
We have a traveling, Charlene's going to correct me, but we have a traveling chair for a little while, so we're going to have one absent.
We will have two absences during the month of January, both regular members. And alternate members of which we don't have any right now, they are eligible to vote on special permits, but not on subdivisions.
Okay. This is a request for him to miss up to five meetings, so I'm sure he's planning an extended absence. We can change this. If it doesn't seem to be working, there's no reason we can't bring this back. Right now, we have no applicants for planning board. Everyone that we've interviewed, we've either approved or not approved. So, right now, we have full membership, seven, seven members, but we don't have any alternates. Don?
Now that Julie's here, I, I've, I have a change of heart in terms of supporting this as long as it's just to get us from here to there. But we do have full membership, and Charlene's absolutely right. The only vacancies we got are in the alternates, and they can only do special permits. So, that won't help you with a quorum overall to achieve at a meeting a quorum for action. So, given that fact and given I'm hearing two other full-time members are going to be traveling up and be willing to support this. On the other hand, if there's, if it, if it becomes a pervasive egregious problem where one, you know, one of the members just isn't showing up, I would urge the planning board chair to tell us that so that we can find somebody who can. Because normally, it would be our plan to staff these boards with people who show up. That's the way the charter reads. I'll vote for it.
Thank you. Can I get a motion?
Mr. Chair, I move that we approve the, I'm sorry, approve remote participation for planning board member David Harris for up to, can we say up to five meetings? Up to five meetings.
Check it.
Moved and seconded to approve the requests. Any discussion?
That had an expiration date, didn't it? Up to five meetings.
Through, from January two thousand and eighteen through to the first half of May two thousand and eighteen.
That was the motion?
That's the motion.
Okay.
Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you.
Thank you.
Town administrators' report.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I do have a few things this evening. Just a, a reminder for folks that we will be having the, the wastewater meeting in terms of the survey results for the Pleasant Bay, Southern Pleasant Bay watershed area. That is January sixteenth, two thousand and eighteen, at seven PM at the community center. Also, on January eighth, there'll be a public hearing with the, I believe it's the finance committee, the Board of Selectmen, and capital outlay on the presentation of the capital plan. So, we, we've been doing that a couple of times, but this is the, the formal one in which the general public will be able to weigh in on it. And I thought the, the next item I have, I, I've been a little remiss at doing this, but due to the time of year, I, I thought I would. We, we, every once in a while, we'll get letters of appreciation and recognition. And I just wanted to, to, to read a part of this one. I, I don't think I'm going to read the whole thing. But this is in regards to our community development department. So, "Over the past year, I've been in town hall more times than I can remember, looking for information on behalf of myself and my clients. I have used the services and assistance of every department CC'd above, and they list building, health, planning, and conservation. While each request and need for, and, while each request and need was different, there was always one consistent. I needed help, and the town employees worked their tails off to assist every step of the way. I know that their job is to serve the needs of the public. I believe that what I have received and witnessed was not simply an employee accomplishing a task, but rather the truest form of service. They were not merely answering questions and providing paperwork. They were invested in the process and dedicated to my fulfillment." It will always be, yeah, it is always refreshing to see that there are still those who choose not only to accomplish their task, but to take the added step to ensure that they work their hardest in the performance of that responsibility. From last-minute paperwork to copies of documents, to large plans and archive investigations, and to follow-up phone calls to make sure that I had received what I needed, these people served." And then she concludes it with, "These town employees deserve my sincerest thanks. I believe that you should be also thankful to have such great people serving our Harwich community." And that was, I, I will use her name, because anything we receive is a public record, Trevor Libby, who is a real estate broker and Harwich citizen. And I can at least say from my time in, in government, you know, when I try to bring people into an organization, I try to drive home the message that it's not just about, you know, doing what you need to do. It's about doing that extra step. And at least it warms my heart that we get letters like this and that that hard work of drawing people in and, and making sure that they clearly understand the expectation that has that. It takes a while to change an organization. And I think that that change is, is starting to come around more and more in a, in a consistent way. And it doesn't mean that we're perfect. Doesn't mean we'll have mistakes, you know, mistakes won't be made. But I think that there is some element, because I think when I started, the biggest area that I saw for dysfunction was the community development department. It means a lot that, that that's come a long way. And maybe with the, with that sentiment, just, I do wish the town employees, the board members, the families in the community and, and all the residents, just a, a very Merry Christmas. And for those that don't celebrate that har, that holiday, a happy holiday to those. And just this time of year, just be safe when you're driving. I was out driving this past weekend. A little snow and ice on the road, so please be careful. We have crews out. Make sure people are safe. And we won't meet again until after New Year, so certainly I hope people are safe on the road through those holidays.
Thank you, Chris.
Just happy holidays.
Thank you, Chris.
Selectmen's report. Larry?
Nothing. I'm just hoping I survive four grandkids for five or six days. But I, I appreciate that, and Merry Christmas to everyone.
Julie?
No, I don't have anything except Christmas shopping to do.
Don?
Well, if you've already got four, if you've already got four or five, I could send another one over to entertain them. But I agree with Chris, with Chris said, Merry Christmas to all and Happy Holidays to those who don't celebrate Christmas.
I would agree with that as well. Happy holidays.
Move your turn.
Not yet.
I'm ready.
So, I just want to comment on administrative staff and, and the, and the department heads who presented to CPC. So, I, I was able to attend most of those meetings. Chris Clark, Charlene did an absolutely outstanding job representing us. They did an outstanding job answering the, the sometimes very difficult questions, sometime repetitive questions. But they represented the town extremely, extremely well in the request for the CPC money.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. As far as the department heads go, the same real words. Lots of department heads have been asked to, to come to meetings, and, and they will be asked to come to another round of meetings. A lot of this is done on extra time, and they also represented the town very well. The applications seem to be complete. I'm hoping that CPC, as they deliberate, will look past some of last year's remarks and kind of look at the new information in the complete packets and vote some of that two-point-seven million dollars. But if they don't, it's not from lack of department heads or Chris or Charlene doing an outstanding job presenting.
Great.
And before Larry does that, just assuming that everybody doesn't go onto the internet and read the packet.
So, the la, last thing on the Selectmen's report is the open meeting law complaint filed by Ron Beatty. We were found not guilty.
I reason he was guilty.
There is some insanity on the board.
I was, I was going to rephrase that. I was going to say that he was, that he was found guilty.
So, one down, one down, two to go. But Ron Beatty's was found that we were not responsible and there was no violation. Now, I will accept a motion to adjourn.
Move your turn.
Second. We are adjourned.